Okay, all right. Andrea, guess what? We're live. Here we are.
Hi.
How you doing? Yay, we made it, we made it.
I'm good.
Good, good. So let me just do some quick introductions. This is on the coattails of our, our series to start having interviews with the candidates for the Board of Ed seat as part of the Westwood Regional School District. Yesterday, we spoke with Jay Garcia and I'm happy to introduce Andrea Peck, who's also running for a seat on that board. So Andrea Peck, good morning to you. How are you today?
Good morning. I'm good. How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you. So just to give some perspective to everybody, you know, we wanted to give this as a, as an opportunity for everybody to, just because of the challenges that we're all having right now with, with COVID and we can't be in confined spaces and large rooms together. You know, it's, it, maybe this is a good opportunity for residents to get to know you and just get more perspective since, you know, we're seeing signs on lawns and maybe Facebook posts. But this is a great opportunity for all the candidates who want to participate to give everyone just that chance and that opportunity. So I want to welcome you and thank you so much for joining me today.
Thank you for hosting.
Absolutely. So what I'd like to do first, if we could, you know, I have similar questions like what I have with Jay and I'll have all these questions for the candidates. So I think one of the first questions that people would want to know, if you could, is just if you could introduce yourself and talk a little bit about your background, like how long have you lived in the area, lived in town? What are the types of things? Are, do you volunteer? Do you have kids in sports or anything like that that you'd want to share with residents?
Okay. Um, I moved to Westwood in, in 2008 from New York City before we had any children. I have a master's degree in early childhood education, a bachelor's in elementary education, and I taught in New York City for a little bit over 10 years.
Okay.
I have worked on a great team with the Brookside PTO as a co-president for the last two plus years. And with the help of Mr. Conroy at Brookside, we brought a amazing program, Girls on the Run, to Brookside. And then in our second season that got started and then canceled because of COVID, we had introduced it to all of the other elementary schools. And I don't know if you know anything about Girl on the Run, but it's this amazing program that uses running for girls in eighth grades three through five to encourage them to build their esteem, some social skills, how, how to handle bullying, how to be a good friend, that kind of thing. So I, I was helped that to Brookside.
Okay.
I, I have two children.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
I have two children, which is, you know, my main reason for my wife doing this is not just my children, but all children. I mean, education is extremely important to me. So I have a second grader and a third grader.
Okay. Great. What, I'm curious, what brought you to the Westwood area?
Um, we wanted something commutable to the city. I didn't anticipate not teaching after that, so I wanted to make sure we could commute. And I liked that at the time our taxes were a little bit lower and, you know, that it was a more diverse community. You know, having come from the city, having worked in a very diverse school system, I was hoping, you know, I wanted some of that for my kids as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. So great. If I could talk a little bit about your why, right? Like why, what, what is it that, you know, kind of what is your why for wanting to run for this seat as part of the Board of Ed role here? Why is it important to you and kind of what's your motivation?
Um, I mean, like, like I said, education's extremely important to me and not just my own children, but all children. As soon as my son entered kindergarten, I took an interest in the board meetings and, you know, have been going for the last couple of years and listening and, you know, speaking when I felt like I had something that I wanted to say. I, I mean, that's, that is my why. I think we can always, I think we have an amazing school system with really great people and I would love to be part of that.
Okay, great.
I, I do want to stop for.
Yeah, sure.
If I could, can I just clarify, there are two, I don't want to say rumors, but things that have been said that I think need some clarification. And it will speak also to my, the last year and a half, I have been also working as a substitute teacher in the Westwood Regional School District. And it has been said apparently that I would have a conflict and I wouldn't, there were certain, there are certain issues that if they came up, I wouldn't be able to participate in votes because I would be an employee. The, the truth is, is that I would have to resign from that position if I was elected. So there wouldn't be any conflict. Same thing with my role and the PTO co-president, I would need to resign from that position. So, you know, it, it, it isn't true that I wouldn't be able to participate in.
Okay, so you would just have to kind of, you would have to give up the position to resign from those positions to take this position?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So thank you for the clarification then, that's, that's important for folks to know. So can we talk a little bit about, let's say, you said you have a master's degree, et cetera. So can you talk about your qualities? Like what are some of the qualities that you think that you possess that would give you some success, do you think, in this role? If you were to win this role?
Um, I mean, I think, you know, I, I think having an education background helps. I, I, I mean, I would never say that it doesn't, but I also think that, you know, you're part of a team that knowing how to work as part of a team and knowing how to, you know, you have to listen. I mean, we're part of, as part of a team, not only do we have to listen to each other, but you have to listen to the parents and the, you know, hear what the parents are saying. I, so I think having been a teacher, having to listen to when parents come to you with concerns, you do have to be able to look at them and say, oh, you know what? I, yeah, maybe I was doing something that you were pointing out to me, I shouldn't have been doing, not that I shouldn't have been doing, but that is, you know, maybe a different perspective. And maybe I could do something better. Or maybe, you know, there are children that I wasn't, you're telling me something that has happened at home that maybe I didn't know as a teacher, I didn't see, and I can see a different perspective. So I think that listening and being able to compromise and being able to work together as a team are really important things for being part of the Board of Ed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about the accomplishments over the years. You know, I, as I've been, I was on the Google, like looking up stuff over, over the years and trying to see, you know, what's been happening over the years with just the Board of Education and, and everything happening with the school district and stuff. And so it seems that there's been a lot of accomplishments, maybe with the middle school, for instance. But what do you think are some of, what would you recognize as some of the accomplishments? And is there anything that you'd want to continue to improve upon moving forward if you were to win this position?
Um, I mean, obviously I think the middle school is a huge accomplishment. I'm thrilled that my eighth grader, not only my son, but my eighth grade daughter will not be in the high school and will still be, you know, get another year to be in a real middle school. So I think that that's an accomplishment. There are some other things, like when I first, when my son first started kindergarten, the school was still using a program called Treasures, which was, which is in my opinion, a pretty outdated reading and writing program. And Dr. Gonzalez, with the help, I guess, of the board at the time, and maybe, you know, some input from some parents, made the switch to the Teachers College Reading and Writing program, which I taught myself in the city. I think it's an amazing program. I think it's a huge improvement for our children to get.
Can you just describe, what is it, what does it do a little bit differently? Does it do something differently? Like what, is it just a different learning style or what's, what's involved with that?
Um, well, so Treasures, and like I said, my kid was, my son was in kindergarten when he was using it, is more of a old school basal reader kind of, all kids are reading from the same text, all kids are reading the same books at the same time, kind of a program. Whereas Teachers College, it gives kids where they are and puts the right books in their hands at the right level. It's the same thing for writing where, you know, all children are taught certain skills, but each child has their own entry level point. So a child who comes to kindergarten who does not write at all can still draw pictures to tell a story. Where a child who can write would be encouraged to use their words. So it kind of opened things up more, I think, for, for different levels of kids.
Okay.
Where they were when they came in.
Okay, great.
So I, I think that's a huge improvement for our school to make that switch.
Okay. Anything else that you think could be improved upon kind of moving forward? Things that the board could work on or working with the, the district?
I, I, I mean, for me, I always want to think about the why, why we're teaching something, what, why we're buying certain programs and putting certain programs in place. From a parent's perspective, I have some concerns about some of the programs that are put in place. And so to, you know, to constantly be asking the why are we, why would we choose this program? Why are we doing this?
Yeah.
I think it's something that we should, we should continue to work on.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, that's, I, I used to work in corporate years ago and that's kind of like a very continuous improvement mindset to ask why and, and try to work through some other things to see how it kind of fits into the big picture. So that's, I, I, that seems like a very important thing for this as well. So can we talk a little bit about one of the issues with such a challenging year for 2020 and with COVID and, and just safety in general and everything that we're hearing on the news? It seems that safety is a big concern perhaps for just, you know, parents and teachers and staff and everybody else. So, you know, how do you think, do you see any opportunities to ensure any health and safety concerns in schools? Or how could this position kind of help in that space? Do you have any outlook around that?
Um, well, I'm glad that, I mean, I'm, I'm not glad that it's taken a pandemic to say our children should be washing their hands before they eat lunch. But I am glad that we are putting, you know, those things in place where children are really being encouraged to wash their hands and stay home if they're sick. Hopefully, you know, more parents will not, will pick up on the fact that they shouldn't be medicating their children and sending them to school with drippy noses. And, and I get that for a lot of people, that's a financial decision, you know, they can't keep their kids home all the time if they're, you know, they have to go to work. But I think that, you know, really encouraging people to make those decisions for the good of all of our children. Um, I mean, I don't have all of the information as to all of the procedures that have been put in place. I feel very confident sending my children to school right now. I know my daughter says, you know, everybody's wearing their masks, everybody is social distanced, they get outside as often as they can, which again, a huge win for everybody. Children should be outside more.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, if they said tomorrow that they would be opening full time, I would send my kids because I feel that confident that they are doing the right things.
So the protocols have been put in place and they're enforced. And you feel good about that?
I do. I mean, you know.
Yeah. And that makes sense too, right? I mean, you're, you're not in the role yet or, you know, so you don't know all the protocols, you're not sure. But that's where you could all kind of work together to, to see how do we, how is it an ongoing process? Because I think everyone is pivoting and flexing right now and we're continuing to do that, right?
And, and I mean, you know, along with the why, I also think that the what's next is also an important question for everybody to keep asking. So we've put these things in place, but we're never done. So we should be able to say, okay, so what's next? We have all these things, but now we're hearing that maybe, you know, there's something new that we could be doing. You know, do we have the funding? Can we put those things in place? So always asking that part of that, the, the next, the what's next.
Yeah, yeah. It's back to that why question, right? Why do we do that?
Why? And then what's next?
Yeah, exactly. So, so I have to apologize, I have major sunlight coming off a blind right now, so it's really showing me. Like, should I, should I close the blinds? It's gotten so bright all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, hello. So, you know, could we talk a little bit about communication next, if we could? So, you know, I have some friends who've got kids in the school system and they've really been just saying how wonderful communication has been, especially during the pandemic, right? So, you know, a friend of mine just said, just the other day, I got a, I got a message from our principal. It's like immediate, it's quick. So how do you think about communication? Is that something that can be improved upon? Has it been good so far? Like just, you know, communication and transparency out to the community, to you as a parent? Like any thoughts about that and how this, maybe, are there any opportunities to improve that, do you think?
I, I mean, you know, I, I always think there's room for improvement for everything. You know, so again, it comes back to what's next. So we put these things in place and they're all great, but what's, what's next? Because I personally feel communication's been great. I don't, I feel like we get real time information. I think that, you know, sometimes where I can sense that there's some frustration with other parents that they're not getting enough information. But I also think that the information is changing so fast all the time that, you know, sometimes holding back and saying, okay, well, let's wait a second before we put this out there and see, is this going to change? Are we going to continue down this road? Or do we, are we going to get something tomorrow that says, oops, wait, sorry, now we have to change it again?
Right.
So I personally have felt very comfortable with the communication that I've gotten. I, like I said, I do sense from some parents that they are not comfortable with it. And so I think that, you know, listening to those parents and saying, well, okay, so what more information do you need to feel more comfortable is, is important.
Yeah, okay. You know, it's amazing what these things can do, right? Right? It's just, I mean, 15 years ago, we didn't have these smartphones and it's amazing how you can get text updates and all that kind of stuff. So it sounds like technology has really kind of improved the communication process for parents and teachers and everybody, so.
Yeah.
One other question for you. So is there any issue or any other issues? Maybe if you pay, is there one issue or maybe two issues that, you know, Westwood might be facing right now that you think maybe could be improved upon? Like I, I've heard about classroom size, for instance, is that something? Or is there something that is kind of with you that you think, you know what, that's something I'd really like to work on if I was to get into this role?
So I, I, I think there's two things for me. One is absolutely class size. It's something that's been coming up for years since I've sat in the board meetings. And, you know, again, this comes back to the what's next for me. So we spent a lot of money and a lot of time with the middle school and that absolutely was the right decision to make. Our kids needed that, they deserved that. But we also now need to say, okay, so we've done that, what's next? And I think what's next needs to be addressing the overcrowding in all of our elementary schools. My neighbor across the street is in her house and she said to me, what, you know, what should I look for when we're in, when we're, you know, picking somebody to, to buy the house? And I said, please don't find anybody that has elementary school age children because there's, we're so crowded. We don't need anymore right now. Little kids, great, yeah, sure, we'll, we're going to have those to keep coming, but elementary school classes. And there needs to be a short term and long term solution because the long term is going to take a couple of years and our children don't have a couple of years to waste or to, not to waste, but to not get all of the, what they need in kindergarten and first grade and second grade. And I mean, I think the pandemic unfortunately has helped a little bit with that because people pulled their children, sent them to private schools where they wanted full time. Numbers are, are a little bit lower now, but it, that's just because of what the situation we're in now. Once we open back up, we still have a lot. And our teachers deserve the chance to meet the needs of all of the kids that are put in front of them. We have amazing, amazing, amazing teachers in our schools, in all of them. I've subbed in all the buildings, they're all amazing.
Okay, so definitely that sounds like one issue is classroom size. Did, I think you had said maybe there was one other issue that you were, you were thinking through a little bit?
Yeah, I, I'm probably going to get a lot of heat for this one, but there are certain, I, I think sometimes we rely a little bit too heavily on technology. And, you know, this year we rolled out a program, iReady, it's supposed to assess our children in reading and math, first grade through, through fifth grade. So I'm just speaking elementary. And I think that the, the program is not, the information that I'm getting from as a parent is not, is conflicting and not, I think, in the best, the best use of technology for our children.
Okay.
Um, I think, you know, it, it assessed our children in math and reading and then gave a, a score per se, a grade level. And then my understanding from what I've asked and gotten the information is that the children will now be put on the, back online and the program is going to teach our children in the areas where they might have some deficit. I have a concern when you tell me that my child is, you know, behind in something and his amazing teacher last year, because you know, his, it's a fourth grade concept, his amazing fourth grade teacher couldn't teach him to the point where he was, where he needs to be now, but a computer program is now going to teach him and fill in those gaps. For me, it's, I think we, we need to look at the why. Why did we choose this program? Why do we think that this is the best way? And, you know, is this really the best way for our children?
Okay. Right, so maybe more of the hands-on, it's still necessary or needed depending on the child needs, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Assessments are absolutely hands down important. I'm not saying we don't need to assess our children, absolutely do. But then what we do with that information, I think, is a, a big question. And how do we meet the needs in a way that's appropriate for our children?
Okay. Great, thank you. Let's move on to, one question I have here is about accountability. And the reason I, you know, just again, with the Google research and just kind of seeing what was out there from articles over the years and stuff is, is the word accountability. So I'm curious, like what does the word accountability mean to you? And what do you think it means for the board? What do you think it means for this position and just what this group is out to accomplish? What does accountability mean, do you think? Why is it important?
I, I mean, accountability, I think in my mind means really truly listening to concerns and addressing those concerns in the most honest, straightforward way possible. I think that, you know, there, there are times where information is very straightforward and there's a lot of information that's put out. And then I think there are other times where information is not always straightforward and put out. And I think it makes people question whether we're getting real information. And I think if there's a reason that the information is not being put out, then we should be told, you know, we have this information, but right now we can't put it out, you know, for whatever reasons. Or, you know, I think that, that people need to feel heard.
And also it sounds like parents, you were talking a little bit as well?
A little bit, yeah. I mean, I, I don't feel that we are purposely being deceived. I know that some people might, and that's the feeling I get when I listen to certain, certain people saying things. I don't get that feeling of that we're purposely being deceived. I do think that sometimes information, more information would make people feel more comfortable.
Okay. Yep. And then I can make informed decisions and, and having that information just provides some insight that they can kind of work through.
Right.
Okay.
And, and then sometimes being willing to change a decision that might have been made. You know, sometimes decisions are made and people question them and, and, you know, it sometime, it sometimes feels like that people dig in their heels, like we've made this decision and we're not going to change our mind on it. And I don't know that that's really the case that happens, it just sometimes feels like that.
It feels that way.
As parents sitting outside in the.
Yeah. So again, voice is heard, you know, were voices heard in that decision-making process? That's important, right? And you want to make sure that that comes across.
Right. And, you know, if there are reasons for the decisions being made, then share the reasons so that people feel like, okay, I understand. I may not agree with it, but I understand it.
Okay. Great, thank you. One other question I have here is just about budget, right? So and the importance of budget. And before you were talking about certain tools or learning styles or computer systems that maybe are used in place of maybe more hands-on opportunities or whatever the situation might be. So in this role, like we talked a little bit about, or I, I have a question here about budgets. So, you know, how would you prioritize? And is it possible, maybe you don't know yet because you're not in the role or you don't have all the insights. But how would you prioritize like a learning need versus working within a budget? And working through that as a team, as board members? Like what's the importance of that? And, and you see that as an opportunity, see that as a challenge, just working with budget and kind of knowing learning that's necessary out there?
Um, I mean, obviously working within a budget's important. You know, I mean, having been on the, the Brookside PTO, I know we have a budget and we, you know, we have, we might all have these great ideas of what we want to do. But if you look at your funding, it's not always there. So, you know, there definitely needs to be a, okay, well, how can we, looking at our budget, how can we work with that budget and try to fill in where we think we might need some savings? But, you know, again, always the why. So, you know, we have this money, why would we choose or not choose a certain program to spend on it? And, you know, if there isn't money for these programs, can we make money somewhere else? Or is that not a priority? I think prioritizing, you know, is important. And, you know, you're part of a team, so listening to what everybody else is, where they think, you know, change could be made within that budget.
Okay. Yep, different perspectives, how they all kind of collectively can be worked through to figure out and prioritize to your point, so. Okay, great. So I have one more question here, actually two more. If there was one thing about the district, what would you change and why, do you think?
Um, I mean, I guess I would. I, I might, I would probably say class size. And I also, you know, and my experience so far has been mostly elementary school. So anything, my perspective is much more elementary school level. I know, I've heard from parents that high school and middle school, there's a lot of choices for our children. We've done a great job of keeping up with, you know, neighboring schools and 21st century skills and things where our children need certain options, you know, elective kind of classes. I think when we look at our elementary school children, I think we've done a great job. But there's always room for improvement of making sure our children love going to school. That there's a lot of joy in what they're doing in the class. And, and there's work. I'm not saying everything's going to be a party all day, every day. The kids have to.
You have to learn. Right.
But could we make the learning more fun? Could we make the, the, you know, the time that they are there, you know, as, as joyful? These are children that, you know, that they, they have a right to a childhood that is joyful. So if that, if, if I, if I was making, if I was to say, I mean, I, I love our school. I love, my children have had amazing teachers. They are very happy to be back in school because, you know.
Yeah.
Being home with me all day is much.
Yeah. After a while, it's, it's a lot, right? For working parents, everybody is like, wow, we're still home. So, yeah. Yeah, they want to see their friends and yeah, it's a lot. So there's a, a lot of different challenges that I, you know, we're still pivoting with. So it's, it's interesting to see, it's crazy, so. All right, so Andrea, I'm gonna, oh, go ahead. Sorry, there's a little delay, go ahead.
No, no, that's. That's fine. I was going to say, like, you know, their social skills, especially having been home for six months and, you know, the fact that they do have to be social distanced in a lot of, you know, finding ways to help them with their social skills and may, and, you know, adjust to being back in, you know. I think social skills are an extremely important part of elementary school, middle school, high school life.
Ah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So Andrea, we're just about to close up here. Ah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, Andrea, we're just about to close up here. Um, uh, yeah, I think that's pretty much it. So what I wanted to do was just ask you one final question, and maybe, it's not even a question, it's more about any, any final thoughts that maybe you have that you would like to just have residents know about you, right? How would you kind of want to close out this interview, um, and leave on a note with?
Um, I, 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 I mean, I, I take this, I would take this role very seriously. Um, it would be an honor to do it, um, to be part of the team that is already there and in place. Um, and, you know, I would, like I said, continue to ask the why and what next questions, because I think that those are the, should be driving force between everything, that, both, with everything that we do, um, at, at our school.
Okay, great. All right, Andrea, we're done. So, there we go. We did it. So, maybe some delays, and I, I got a text from Tonyanne that said my microphone might have been rubbing on my shirt, so I apologize for that, but I hope the sound came across okay. Um, but what I, I just want to let you know that, um, for this, this will be shared to the Facebook page. Um, and I will also be sending you a copy of this, so if you want to post it anywhere, you'll be able to do that as well, so.
Okay.
Okay, and much luck to you and success, and good luck at the election.
Thank you, it was nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you as well, virtually. We'll see you in town hopefully soon.
Yes, I'm sure.
All right, take care. Thank you so much.
Bye.
Bye-bye.